Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Gibson, Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
You have a call, Madam Chair. Let's see if we can get them on the line.
So, we need to have our pledge of allegiance and our.
You need to vote for them to approve.
Okay. So, we have to vote to approve having two of our members join us by telephone. Ms. Dawn Page is phoning in because she is self-quarantining at the moment, having picked up her two sons who flew in from Spain this weekend. And Ms. Door is calling in because she is now in a childcare situation where she is sharing childcare with another family, and they have both agreed that they are going to be super strict about precautions. So, do I have a motion to approve their call?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
I enjoy this distance.
And let the record reflect you've been joined by Ms. Gibson.
Thank you for being here.
Your call cannot be completed as dialed.
She says that.
Do you want to? It won't let me complete your call, your code.
But she says they have called in. Linda Owen.
Right here. Dawn Page.
We barely hear you, so we're trying to make the volume come up.
Okay, we can hear, I can hear you all fine.
Good.
Likewise.
All right. Okay. Then, let us consider what we do next is the pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
It didn't get in there, did it? But we can do that maybe during our coronavirus planning update?
Deal.
Okay. So, the personnel actions. They were posted to board docs, and Ms. Desko has also handed them out. Give you a minute to review them while Ms. Desko presents them.
Good evening. Tonight's personnel actions include the nomination of five employees, the change of contract of 13 employees, the resignation of eight employees, the furlough of six employees, the return from leave of five employees, the retirement of five employees, precision of resignation by one employee, the termination of one employee, and the name change of new employees.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So moved.
No move.
Okay. Was that Ms. Page that moved?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Barlow seconds. Okay, got them. All right. Ms. Door.
Yeah.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Sapini.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine oh. All right. Mr. Camaras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say thank you to the board for their leadership, guidance, support, thought partnership, and so much more over the last several days. This is truly an unprecedented time, and grateful to have so many colleagues to rely upon as we navigate the current situation. I did want to just provide a few updates as to where we are, and then raise a couple of issues that I just wanted to get your guidance on. So first, I want to, in addition to thanking the board, certainly want to thank the city, Mayor Stoney, President Newville, Dr. Avula from the Health Department, who have all been incredibly helpful. Whatever we have needed, they have provided, and on behalf of RPS, I just want to say thank you. I also want to thank our incredible students, families, staff, community members, who have all pitched in in small and large ways to help us through this time. I've seen all kinds of incredible things on social media and through texts, folks pitching in to help one another, and it's just truly been overwhelming to see the love and support of the broader Richmond community, wrapping their arms around our students and families and staff. So, to anyone watching, I just want to say thank you. We are so grateful to you, and look forward to the continued partnership over the next several weeks, if not months. So, an update on where we are. So, one, as I shared earlier, we will now be closed through spring break. So, originally, we had a two-week closure. Then there was one week potentially of school, and then spring break. We are now going to be closed at a minimum through spring break. It is very clear that we will not, as a community, be prepared to open in two weeks, so we wanted to provide that clarity for our students and our families and our staff. It could potentially be longer than that, and we will reassess as we get our way through the next couple of weeks. But we did want to provide that clarity now so that families could plan. We recognize this continues to cause enormous hardship for many families in terms of childcare, food, all kinds of other day-to-day realities. We are working with the city, with nonprofit partners, to figure out a plan, potentially on childcare, particularly for first responders or any of our staff that are essential personnel. And certainly on the food. We have set up 20 food distribution centers across the city. They were operational today. Again, the hours are 9:30 to 12:30, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We did not have a huge number of families access the centers today. Based on conversations with families and staff at the centers, I think there are three things going on. One, word is still spreading about the existence of the centers. I think now that food is going home, that is going to happen more readily. I think, two, some families understandably tried to stock up this weekend, and so there might not be as much of an immediate need today. But as we get into next week, which is the end of the month, when funds are very low in many households, and maybe that initial stock of food has been depleted, we anticipate an uptick. The third issue that we know about is some families aren't able to get to the centers. And so either that's a transportation issue, it could be a childcare issue. You have little children. You can't leave them to go get the food, or you can't bring them for other reasons. So, we are working around the clock, and hopefully we'll have a solution very soon of how to leverage partners to get food from our centers into the neighborhoods. And we've had lots of offers of help on that front. There's some details we're working through, but hope to have a plan on that very, very soon. I think as we get into next week, we'll have a better sense of if we may be facing any shortages in terms of the meals that we're able to provide, but we've already alerted the city and philanthropic partners that we might need additional support in getting those resources for our families. I will share every school division in Virginia, and pretty soon every school division in America is going to be trying to do the same thing that we are doing, and so there's going to be stress on the food distributors. And so we are trying to get ahead of that by developing partnerships with Feed More and other places in the city to try to be able to provide support. We've also had the generosity of the market at 25th put together for $11, basically a week's worth of groceries for families in the East End. We're looking to other partners like that who can pitch in. That can take some of the pressure off of RPS to support families. So that is, in essence, where we are on food. On academics, we have put up an at-home learning section of our website, which has all kinds of resources, including sample schedules that families could use with elementary students, middle and high school students, online resources like vocabulary, and reflex math, and all kinds of other things that we normally use, along with an easy way for families to log in. We've also are printing, as we speak, packets, physical packets. They will be drop shipped to the food distribution sites on Wednesday, and will be available to kids and families at that point. We will have to reassess as we get towards the end of next week what the next round of academic support looks like. I do want to note, obviously, many of our families do not have internet access. I do want to make sure the public knows, and we've tried to push this out, that Comcast is now offering free internet for anybody that wants it. You can sign up, and I've been sending out the phone number for that. In addition, any Xfinity hotspot anywhere is now accessible for free. So, we're also pushing that out. One of the issues, though, obviously, if you do not have a device, you can't get online. And so we're talking with folks, both technology companies, but also philanthropy, about what could we do to get more devices out to our kids as quickly as possible so that they have the access to be able to get on and use some of these resources. Last, in terms of overview, we have designated a number of individuals as essential personnel to maintain vital functions, payroll, accounts payable, benefits, which obviously is going to be very important for our staff at this time, basic communications, basic technology, infrastructure. But trying to make that as narrow as possible so that folks can be home, taking care of themselves and their families. I just issued further guidance around custodians. We're going to, in essence, sending them home, except for folks at the food and nutrition sites for the time that they are operational, to do cleaning. We will do a deep clean of our schools before reopen in some time, but that is not necessary now. We know a number of our custodians themselves are advanced age in a susceptible group for the coronavirus, and want to make sure that they are well additionally. One thing I wanted to raise with the board and would like your consent to move forward with. We have made a commitment to pay all of our employees, full-time, part-time, and hourly. One issue we have recognized is a bit of a challenge on the hourly front is that, let's take an hourly bus monitor. Perhaps one week is working six hours, one week five, one week seven. As we look to pay them going forward, we obviously don't know how many hours they would have worked during that time, but we want to make sure that they're taken care of. And so what I would like to do is pay these folks the maximum that they could make under an hourly shift. That will mean we're spending probably a little bit more money than we would otherwise. I do not have an exact calculation for you at this time, but given that these are relatively low-paid individuals as it is, I do not think it's an overly significant amount of money. And I think our overriding principle right now should be to ensure nobody gets less than they were getting. These are also folks who are very close to the poverty line as it is, and so I would be concerned about potentially underpaying or paying less than what folks anticipated getting. So, I don't know if you need to do a vote, but at least I would love to just have your support to move forward with that. And of course, I will continue to provide updates so that we know exactly how much the related cost is. But that would be for folks like some of our nutrition workers, bus operator folks. We have a number of hourly employees that we really just need to make sure are taken care of during this time. I think that is all that I have at this time. Glad to take any questions.
All right. Mr. Barlow, then Mr. Young, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for the update. And it's, I will say, these are unprecedented times that do call for unprecedented measures in a lot of respects. So I would support the proposal related to ensuring that all of our staff members are receiving at least as much pay as they may have expected while working. And I also want to commend the administration for the leadership that they've taken with respect to setting up food distribution centers, communicating with the public, and ensuring that our families understand that RPS is here to support them and their students. So, I wanted to start by saying thank you there, and I would like to hear more updates about how we intend to handle these food distribution centers moving forward. I know that you mentioned delivery may be something that we consider. I've certainly heard concerns about whether certain communities have sufficient access to these food distribution sites. Gilpin Court is an area in particular that comes to mind, so. Did I mention the Carver change or not? Not publicly. Okay. May I do so now?
Certainly.
My apologies. We are making two changes to the food distribution sites. One, we are going to close the Henderson site because there's construction in the area which is making it very difficult for families to access it. We do have a site at Ginter Park, though, which is very close. So we're encouraging anyone who was going to use the Henderson site to go to the Ginter Park site. We are going to add, starting Wednesday, a site at Carver specifically for families in Gilpin Court. And we would ask that folks are respectful of families at Gilpin Court, since that will be their primary access point. So again, closing Henderson due to the obstructions, but folks can go to Ginter Park. We are opening Carver as of Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I do think I'm really encouraged to hear that, and I appreciate that. And as we talk about what delivery may look like, it may be helpful to take a look at community centers in these areas to see if we may be able to distribute through those as well.
Mr. Young, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To answer your question, soliciting feedback from the board, yes. I certainly support what you proposed. We're going to have to spend a lot of money that was unanticipated. My question for you regards if, and I suspect we have, and though it's still early, if we have identified opportunities for us to reduce expenditures to allocate for these unexpected costs. I mean, so for example, I think of fuel. We won't be spending money on fuel, unfortunately. Presumably, perhaps we can reduce our utilities expenditures, et cetera. But if we have, and again, a conson of we're, folks a little north of here keep referring to baseball. We're in the first few innings, so we have a long, long way to go on this. But do we have any kind of initial projections of dollars that we can conserve for the purpose of spending in ways that we didn't anticipate just a month ago?
I don't have an estimate for you this evening, but we are beginning to look at exactly those kinds of things. I also think there are just some programmatic things that were to be developed or launched in the next couple of months, and so we're going to have to take a harder look at those as well. And then there are just some things that were potentially, I hesitate to say nice to have, because it feels like everything is a need to have, but might not be as essential in the middle of a pandemic where we're just going to have to press pause. So, we will work on that this week and try to come back to the board with more clarity about specific places where we can freeze spending or where we anticipate some savings, whether it's fuel, energy, and so on, to put towards the hourly wages, food, any additional cleaning, et cetera, that we need to do.
Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as Mr. Barlow stated, I too, Mr. Camaras would like to thank you for stepping out on faith, and you just did how you were led, along with your administration. You were a step ahead of the whole process. Unfortunately, we have crises to take place, and this is not the first crises we've had, but this one's a little bit different. But you've been resilient in that, and I thank you so very much, number one, for the press conference. And number two, making sure our boys and girls have the opportunity to have food, because most of our families are in food deserts. And as you and I have talked, my concern is with the Fulton area because the schools are at the top of the hill. But there are churches, there are organizations that are volunteering right now that's in the area. A lot of our neighborhood places have closed. The Y is closed. I think the Big Brothers, not Big Brother, sisters, other one. Boys and Girls Club, yes, they've closed. So a lot of complexes that have places where our children could walk, they don't. So, some people have volunteered if we need to do one evening, drop off, let's say 4:30 to 6:30, that there are slew, one person volunteered, and you know him well, he said, "I can get 100 persons together for you." So I'm sure that the East End is the only area that would have that concern. So, however, we can address that, because we can send out all the academic pieces we want and then some, but if our children's basic needs of food and water and care, that sends a message to them also that you do care. We do care. RPS Direct was one of the best I've read. Anything, any information that was needed. One parent today called, asked, "My child doesn't have any work to do." I said, "Yes, you do." But after I got on RPS Direct, the work was rather challenging. It was rather challenging. So I'm looking forward to those paper packets as well, but also this is an opportunity for older siblings to help their younger siblings, to tutor them and work with them. So I hope that gets out across the board. I am fully in favor of the hourly employee full funding and support. Those persons, our bus drivers, our persons that keep our buildings clean, our persons that serve our meals, they are the first and last persons that our children see. So they set the tone for what takes place the rest of the day. So however this is done, and as you stated also, we're not paying a whole lot of money. And it's not just Richmond Public Schools, it's across the country. So I thank you for considering the needs of our children, but our employees also. And I think that was the last, I had five things. I think I covered all five. Food, academics, hourly employees, RPS Direct, and just as Carver has an area, I'm sure, Rainbow City, and Ashley Oaks would also appreciate that support, and however I can help with that. I wouldn't do it by myself, because people are out there volunteering, but we know where to go and who's going to help. So thank you. Well done. I'll be glad when this is over. But our main thing is, keeping the main thing, the main thing is that is the needs of our children. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Sapini, then Mr. Young.
I was wondering, have you been in contact with social services? And if so, what is the status of, you know, what are they doing?
Yes, so I've been on a daily call with all the city agencies, and they are also mobilizing. I can't speak to the specifics of everything that they're doing. I'm just not as well-versed. But I do know that they are trying to reach out to families that are on their caseloads to check in, to see what needs that they have. Obviously, we're all very concerned as families have to now stay home and watch children, worried about people losing jobs, facing eviction. So I know RRHA has frozen all evictions, but there's obviously many apartment complexes and such beyond RRHA. We know that there are high school students in RPS who will now be watching their elementary brothers and sisters as mom, grandma, dad, grandpa goes to work. So, you know, I've spoken at length with Reggie Gordon from the city and others to try to coordinate as best as we possibly can to make sure those folks are getting the support that they need.
Mr. Young.
Well, not sure how to ask this question, but maybe this is partly a question for our board leadership, for our chair and vice chair, but going forward, we had conversations relevant to next year's budget, the 2021 budget, and I won't belabor the, you know, the conversations that we had in the past. Do we have any recommendations or and/or ideas relevant how to proceed, given the new circumstances, and if, what we may anticipate? I guess my question is, have we had any discussions, this would be for superintendent or for board leadership, with our friends in the Commonwealth about if the budget may change, if our anticipated allocation may not be what it is because of, God forbid, looming recession, et cetera, and revenue not materializing?
Sure, the answer is no. There's just so many other sort of mission-critical matters that have been triaged. As you know, the Assembly just passed the budget five days ago. I hesitate to speculate, but my sense is, at some point, the federal government is going to need to provide assistance to schools around the country, whether that's for nutrition, compensatory learning, who knows what it will be. And so I do think that is likely our best source for support over the long term. But no, we have not had any conversations, or I have not been in any conversations as of yet, about changes to the state budget.
And I will say that we are exploring ways for video conferencing for us, and that's really not too hard. We can have a meeting once we've learned how to use the software. The public access to that is a little more complicated, but we're not going to just send you home and never see you for a month. We're going to, we're going to figure that part out, and so we can have discussions about our budget things we wanted to talk about going forward. Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I would like to hear from Ms. Lilly in particular about our ability to conduct online meetings. We had a discussion earlier this week, which certainly leads me to believe that we're allowed to do that. So just to make sure that the public and the board is very clear on our authority or ability to hold those types of meetings. The other question that I wanted to ask out of an abundance of caution is, as we move forward.
is, as we move forward, I don't think it's unfair to assume that it's, the infections are going to get worse before they get better. How do we intend, and, or at least I want to make sure it's on our radar, that we need to be careful about these food distribution sites? And I know that we're attracting volunteers to help distribute food at this point, but I would like to make sure that we're cognizant of the fact that we may need some sort of ability to screen individuals who are providing these resources to our families, to make sure that we're doing it as safely as possible. So I'm curious to know if the administration has any initial thoughts on that, or if there's been any discussion or collaboration with health authorities to discuss how to use best practices for food distribution, or if that's something that will be on our radar moving forward.
Yes, we have had some initial conversations about what a screening protocol would be for folks at the sites. I think our initial top concern was that they were staffed and we could execute on them. I think we have crossed that threshold now. And so as we get into next week, we'll begin to think about what those, or putting in place some of those protocols. As I shared in my message just earlier this evening, we are also asking members of the public to not just show up at a distribution site to help. We deeply appreciate the help, but what ends up happening is you have too many people at the site, which undermines the notion of social distancing. So if you want to help, go on our website to sign up, and then our Office of Engagement will reach out and let you know where you are most needed. But please do not show up at the distribution sites if you have not been contacted.
Okay.
I also just wanted to note, I've been asked to do a live interview on Channel Eight to provide updates. They have asked me to be there by 7:05. So if there are additional questions or matters, if it is the will of the board, I would love to.
Oh, you have to go there?
Yes.
Well, we have a couple of things we need to do here.
Yes.
We have your budget transfer that you need voting on, and then Mr. Barlow and Ms. Gibson. Okay. So should we start with Ms. Gibson?
Sure. Thank you. As a, as a parent, I am truly thankful for all the communication and updates. And I am, you know, in work-school mode and appreciative of the packet that came home that my kids worked on over today, this afternoon. And as a board member, I do think it's odd that we're sitting here right now, because, you know, I mean, the, this is a public meeting, and so I'm thankful we're talking about, you know, hosting these virtually, but, you know, the VDOE is not meeting, we're telling people not to come to City Hall, and, you know, we're meeting, and so I am sensitive to that, you know. And I think that our situation is similar to the entire country, in that this health crisis really highlights true gaps in public services, you know, gaps in the ability to, you know, have healthcare, gaps in access to transportation, gaps in access to technology, gaps in access to food in an emergency. And I hope that it's a wake-up call for our country to recognize the necessity of these public services. I am thankful that the, this incident has also highlighted the concern with our hourly workers. I think that, you know, as we know, those hourly workers are, you know, are close to living in the poverty level, and to be faced with, from week to week, not having security in terms of the number of hours that someone is working, it's not okay. And I hope that as we continue to refine our budget, that is not just something that we try to tackle because of this emergency, but this is something that we look at addressing, addressing at a larger scale. I think that it is imperative for us to be looking at our policy. Let's see my computer. So policy six point two, or six dash two point one, safety of school facilities policy, and six point two point two, which notes there's, the six point two point two is our policy specific to school crisis, emergency management, and medical emergency response plans. And in that policy, it states that the board, let's see, the board will review our emergency plans on an annual basis. And I think it is critical that this board, you know, receives and reviews those plans with expediency to ensure that we've considered the, this type of crisis in that, in that document. You know, as we think about the, you know, budget transfers and things, and, you know, we'll talk about that more, but ultimately, I think that we need to have a plan. And, you know, this didn't sneak up on us, you know. This is something that we've been talking about as a country and as a world for a very long time, and we have to figure out how to get ahead of the game. And in order to do that, we need to have those plans and protocols in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Ms. Gibson brings some really valuable points to the table here, in particular with respect to the necessity of public services, and especially on the local level. And I do hope that people who are watching the response to this crisis locally understand or have a better understanding as we go through this process of how integral a role Richmond Public Schools and other local school divisions play in our communities. Because we are not just, just an educational agency, we are an agency that provides nutrition for our students, who provide social and emotional supports for our students, and are likely more in touch with the needs and are addressing the needs of folks locally more than nearly any other agency, I would imagine. So, so I hope that people continue to understand that role as we move forward. And I also want to make sure that we are in a position, moving forward over the next, over the coming weeks, to ensure that we can continue to provide these supports to our community, and we can do so in a nimble and expeditious fashion. So I did send a resolution out, a proposed resolution out to my colleagues this weekend, and I would like to vote to amend the agenda, to add consideration of a resolution to, first of all, provide some additional authority for budget transfers, to ensure that we can make necessary budget transfers to respond to this virus as expeditiously as possible. And then also to, to affirm that the emergency contracts provision of policy three dash three point four, which is our purchasing policy, is in effect throughout this, throughout this period. So I will-
So you're making that motion?
Yes, I'll move to consider the resolution that I sent to my colleagues this weekend.
Second. Do you have a copy with you?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't have a hard copy. I do have electronic copies and have asked that it be-
As it happens, our clerk has it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. So I will read it, if that's okay? All right. Mr. Barlow's resolution reads as follows. Whereas the United States Commonwealth of Virginia and City of Richmond have each declared a state of emergency rated to the COVID-19 virus outbreak in the United States. And whereas the school board of the City of Richmond, the school board, recognizes that the COVID-19 virus presents a clear and present danger to Richmond Public School students, staff, and Richmond community members. And whereas the school board recognizes that further efforts to ensure the health, safety, and continued education of Richmond Public School students and prevent further COVID-19 infection require significant and decisive action by Richmond Public Schools. And whereas the school board recognizes that suspension of certain school board policies may enable the decisive action necessary to contain and prevent COVID-19 infection and enable continued support for Richmond Public Schools, students, and staff. Be it therefore resolved that the school board hereby declares that Richmond Public Schools is in a state of emergency, state of emergency, which will expire upon, one, lifting of the United States Commonwealth of Virginia and City of Richmond states of emergency, two, a majority vote by the Richmond School Board, or, three, written notice by at least five members of the Richmond School Board to the Chair and Superintendent of their desire to terminate such authority. Be it further resolved that throughout the state of emergency, in addition to the $500,000 the school board intends to transfer to support the RPS COVID-19 response, the Superintendent and School Board Chair will be authorized to make balanced transfers up to a cumulative total of an additional $1 million, as long, so long as the school board is provided with at least 24 hours' advance notice of any such transfer, the transfer authority. Be it further resolved that in the event any two or more school board members object in writing to a budget transfer made pursuant to the transfer authority or to a portion of such a transfer within the 24-hour notice period, the Superintendent and School Board Chair will not be authorized to make the transfer or the portion of such proposed transfer objected to by such members. Be it further resolved that the school board affirms and recognizes that the authority granted to the Superintendent in the emergency contracts provision of policy three dash three point four purchasing is hereby in effect throughout the state of emergency, and be it further resolved that the school board hereby suspends any policies that may limit the authority set forth in this resolution only to the extent required to provide the authority set herein. So it was moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there discussion? No, I don't think so. Do we have to suspend our rules?
The policy, excuse me, the resolution, as I understand it, includes the suspension of several policies.
Yes.
And so-
And because of the emergency.
Correct. So that's incorporated in the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
So they only need one vote?
They need two thirds of votes.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, as the next item on our agenda is specific to the budget transfer items, it would be, I wonder if we might have this discussion after, after that discussion of budget transfers. One of my questions is to get more specifics in terms of what are the things that could come up. I do want to understand, you know, what we anticipate, what do we see other districts, you know, allocating resources to, what has happened in precedent and other, other circumstances that might have some parallels to this. So, you know, rather than, I feel somewhat premature to approve this without having some discussion as to what this could entail.
So, Mr. Barlow, would you be all right with having the other budget transfer request precede the voting on your resolution?
Yes, as long as you don't have to read it again.
I did it as fast as I could. All right. Mr. Kamras?
Sure. Do you have, thank you.
All right. Ms. Gibson, to your point first, a little bit more clarification on the action to each one of these lines. So one point, I can either go through them all, or I should take questions, which do you prefer?
Why don't you just quickly go through them?
Yep. All right. In one point two, this is the early literacy curricular materials. So this $100,000 could be negotiated down a bit lower in the contract, or additional materials could be purchased in the next fiscal year as needed. One point four, these were communications related to specialty school and opportunities for advanced coursework, since most of the specialty school work and conversations are done for this year. This is taking $20,000 off of those communications. One point five is $5,000, that's the Special Education Advisory Council's food, half of it. One point six, $5,000, that's the English Language Learners Advisory Council's food and materials, half of that. One point seven, $8,000 is out of the Alt Ed Council's food and supplies. That hasn't even kicked off yet, because as you know, the manager was just approved in the last four. One point eight, the $200,000 are the three, they hit principal lead roles at the preschool centers. As you recall, only two of those have been filled to date.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes.
For one point seven, you did $8,000, but you didn't do the $10,000, one point seven.
What is that? Do you see what she, do you know what she's saying? So this was in Project Three, there was an initial $10,000 for designing the new alternative education model. That person doesn't necessarily say the $10,000 this year. We'll pull that back. Two point five is two separate amounts, the $50,000 and the $20,000. Those were the dollars allocated to the equity work that the board had cut from the fiscal year '21 budget, so we didn't want to start that work this year, and then press pause for the next. Three point four are the retreats, which in the fiscal year '21 budget, we pulled into the Passion for Learning budget. Three point eight, $5,000, that was food and supplies for the Justice Collaborative. We're working collaboratively with them and don't need to spend the money there. Four point one, these are materials for the Go Farther Together leads in each school. We can scale that back a little. Four point six, the $15,000, those are family academy materials. We can ask our partners to donate more of those. And five point four, the 15, 10, and 5,000, that's work with our new school planning team, considering school-based budgeting and equity-based work in terms of where resources go. We can push that work to fiscal year '21.
Ms. Gibson, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that, that needs to be documented, because there's, you know, I couldn't write that down as quickly as you were saying it. There's a lot of detail there, and this is budget-related, and so this is some information we might need to go back and reference. So, so I need assurance that this will be, you know, documented, because, you know, it's just not clear. because, you know, it's just not clear from that. That's, you know.
You can either add the projects onto that, or I can do an iterative, as I did here, and upload that onto Word docs.
Yeah, and. I think that this should be revised to include the, to include the detail. And, you know, I, I, you know, I think the public may also question, again, you know, that there's, this is now more money that we said we needed, you know, and now we're cutting out. I mean, this is, if we add up the equity audit, we add up these things, this is, appears that there was a lot of additional stuff. And, and so I'm, I mean, I'm thankful that we have it so that we can have a contingency. But, but contingency funds should be allocated in a contingency line item. And this just appears that we were not planful. And so, so I, you know, so I'm very torn. I wanted to add clarity to what my original request was in terms of talking about the detail. What I actually want to get a plan on is what we're going to be doing with the $500,000. You know, and, and thinking about the nurses, you know, I mean, I begged to include nurses in our budget to ensure we had a nurse and a full-time nurse in every school, you know, two years ago. And I was told that there was no reason to put it in there because there's no way we were going to be able to hire those nurses. And so my question is now, we've got a line item, or, you know, to, to hire temp nurses. And amidst this crisis, how, how are we going to be able to, to ensure we have those people? How many nurses do we need? And then I also want to understand, what are the nurses going to do?
Are you talking about the other budget transfer?
Mm-hmm.
Those aren't temp nurses. Those are through IEPs. Those are one-to-one nursing services. So those aren't.
Oh, it says temp nurses.
It says temp nurses.
It says temp nurses.
They're not temporary nurses. They're the.
Temp nursing. Only as required for temp.
I'm not sure what the code is specifically, but those are one-to-one nurses.
So, so yeah, we, we need more detail. You know, how many? What is the shortage? What's happening? And, you know, what is the plan to be able to bring those people on board, given the reality that we are now cut down to just essential staff in, in the, in the school district? So I, I just think it, it is critical that we don't just allocate money, but that we allocate money with a, with a plan attached that, that, that doesn't include, you know, that, that's a, that's a concrete plan.
Jordan, I'm sorry, just again to clarify, this is because more services are being given to students written into the IEPs. So this isn't a shortage. We don't have, our nurses are, like you said, nurses for schools in the building. These are one-to-one nursing aides for students with special needs that we work with a contracting group that does those nurses. It's not a position that, that has a shortage associated with. We're just simply making sure we can cover what's written in the IEPs. Just to clarify that. I'll find out the way it is.
All right, Mr. Young. Then Mr. Barlow, then Dr. Sapini. And then Ms. Cosby.
I just wanted to ask if, you know, I was a little bit finished with the presentation because we did one side, but we need the other side with the, is the next, the next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the janitorial.
Oh, well, to Ms. Gibson's point, this $553,000 was being moved over into janitorial support to support cleaning and things in the buildings, contracting services for deep cleanings and such.
The tour point, so we don't have a detailed plan.
No.
Like he went through, okay, this is where we're taking it from, but we don't have, this is how we're going to, a detailed plan in terms of how we're going to. So much is cleaning supplies, so much is for, I guess it's just a bit, I'm sorry, I don't want to get, I'm sorry, John. I'll ask my question.
I believe, although obviously not every member of the leadership team is here tonight as we're also working to limit staff, but this is for cleaning supplies and contracting services.
Mr. Young?
Oh, thank you. First and foremost, let me stipulate, I'm of course going to vote to approve this. And in context of a pandemic, I think everything is, past tense is a nicety. So I really applaud the administration for identifying dollars that, that can be repurposed. My only inquiry regards, and I think it addresses what Felicia was hinting at, is this going to be enough? And I recognize that that's a difficult question to answer, to answer now. But, and presumably part of the impetus for Scott's resolution. But prayerfully, we won't need to spend additional dollars for this purpose. But I guess my, my question regards if, if we think that this is sufficient or if there's some probability that we'll have to, to scale up what we're, what we're going to spend. Thank you.
I don't think it's going to be enough. But we are addressing the issues as they arise. And so certainly as we get into the next week to 10 days, I think we'll have a better sense of what those needs might be. And certainly, of course, we'll come back to the board and articulate in additional detail what that is, that is looking like. So I would be grateful if the board were to approve Mr. Barlow's resolution. I think it would help us to be able to move swiftly. And I do think it has a number of safeguards in place to ensure that the board maintains its oversight. And of course, we take every dollar extremely seriously. So we will make sure both, if the transfer goes through regardless, we will make sure there's additional detail that is put on board docs so that the board and the public can see it. And prospectively, if we are to need to make additional transfers, we will make sure that we provide as much detail as we possibly can to make sure everyone is fully informed.
All right, Mr. Barlow, then Dr. Sapini, then Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll withhold my comment at this point.
Okay. Dr. Sapini?
My question and comments really were kind of piggybacking off of what Ms. Gibson and Ms. Cosby referenced was as far as the janitorial. What specifically did that entail? And yes, as Mr. Young mentioned, will it be enough? Because a few things, one, how many contractors? How much would they get? How often would we need them, considering the fact that we'll be out for, what, four weeks? If, let's say, they're done in three weeks, then what? There's just unfortunate, not too much detail to, to raise in these questions. And as far as staffing, how many staff members do we have that's going to be helping with this? As far as cleaning supplies, does that mean we don't have any? Or we have a certain amount? And how much more do we need, so on and so forth? I'm assuming these are the VOE specific products that are necessary, right? So those are really my questions and thoughts. If we're out for four weeks, at what point then could we, and that's if, because as you mentioned, it may be even longer than that. So what happens afterwards?
You want to respond?
I, I, I don't have all those details, the number of supplies and the number of hours and such. Certainly, I can gather that for the board. Mr. Simmons is focused on the meal centers tonight. But yes, can certainly gather as much information as we possibly can to, to provide that to you. You mentioned supplies. The CDC put out a list of what is approved and what's not. And we had to, we've already had to purchase some new supplies. We will likely need to do so again. As I shared with, in response to Mr. Young's question, do you anticipate that our expenses will exceed this amount for this transfer? But I can't speak specifically to that, which is why I'm not asking for any more at this point. But again, we will gather as much information as we possibly can and certainly continue to provide that as it becomes available.
Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow. Okay, Ms. Gibson?
I actually had a similar question as, as Dr. Sapini in terms of wanting to get clarity in terms of the timeframe that would be necessary to complete the work. And I, I think that in terms of the, the resolution on the table, you know, if there was some language that speaks to getting, you know, a certain amount of detail in terms of what the, the planning process would be, would be, would be really helpful to see. You know, I think that the, the, the point that I brought up earlier in terms of the review of our emergency plan is critical. And I'd like to hear from the administration what the timeframe could be in, in reviewing those protocols to ensure that, once the schools are, are back open, that we have a documented protocol in place.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address Ms. Gibson's point about, about including sufficient detail in the, including that in the resolution. I do think that is a, an important point. And my expectation is that based on the feedback that the administration has heard from, from our colleagues here this evening, that they'll understand that additional, will likely need more additional detail, a better narrative than we may have seen initially on this budget transfer request moving forward with any requests that would fall under this resolution. You know, when, when you're, when you're sort of drafting some of these ideas, you have to, you have to come up with some, some reasonable levels of parameters with respect to a resolution. So here, the, the threshold for rejection of a request by the administration is a mere two members of the school board. So if there isn't sufficient detail and one other person agrees with you, then you can certainly, you can certainly object to a transfer and request additional detail or withhold your consent for a transfer until you get that additional detail. So I do think that there's a mechanism in place there. But I, I'm not, I'm not really confident that detailing what specific information we would want in this resolution at this time would be the most effective use of our time. So, so the point is duly noted. I, and I also understand a lot of the desire to have a better idea of where some of these expenditures may be going, where some of them may be going in the future. I think the unfortunate reality that we're in now is that there are a lot of unknowns. Certainly broadly, the community in our country and a lot of the world has known that the coronavirus, COVID-19, is a thing. They've known that it's dangerous and that it's spreading. It seems clear based on other European countries and other places in the United States that, that we have to take dramatic efforts as a community, and there is a lot of personal responsibility here, to prevent the spread. What we can't guarantee is that everyone will take those obligations seriously. What we can't guarantee is that, that this won't spread through our community rapidly. What we can't guarantee is that we will have our students back in school in three or four weeks or before the end of the school year. Because we are in a, a situation where there are so many unknowns. That's why I think granting some level of authority to, to, to allow for budget transfers without needing to publicly notice a meeting and bring all the board members together is important. Because we, as we've noted earlier tonight, Richmond Public Schools plays an extremely important role in our community. And what that role looks like may, may evolve as we, as we continue to respond to this situation. So my hope is that we don't have to touch another dollar. My hope is that everyone thinks that we were too cautious or that we were too bold with these types of things. But I think there's a very real reality that this $1 million may not be sufficient. There's a very real possibility that, that we're going to have to have continued discussions because the nature of our organization through this time period has changed in a fundamental way. We are not in the, in the classic business of bringing people into the classroom and providing a day-to-day education in the same way that we were last week. So as our role has evolved in the community, we have to be ready to, to make sure that we are responsive to the needs of our kids first and foremost, and to their families and to our employees. So, so all these points, I think, are duly noted. But given the gravity of the situation and given the safeguards that we've put or that, that are in place in this resolution, I hope we'll have strong support from, from the entire board for it.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you.
And then Ms. Page.
So I think that my perspective here is that the community is as scared as it is. You know, anything else, there's a lot of fear. And I do not think there is a better way to, to get the assurance of the community than to let them know what's happening and what to expect, the very best of our ability. And so when I say that we need to have a plan, this is not about splitting hairs. It is about providing that assurance. And I think that, you know, what we, what we can do to, to provide peace of mind as the city, state, country is navigating this uncharted territory, you know, to, to show the community that we are, you know, coming from a, a place of information and, and best practice, I think, would, would behoove us. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we're not providing documents that imply, you know, look like it's temp nurses and it's something else, you know? I mean, we just, we just need to make sure that there really are no questions.
Okay. Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I support this.
Speak up, please. Ms. Page, speak, speak really loud, please.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay. Can I turn, what am I now?
The microphone will go down to the.
She's got it right down there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I was saying that I support this budget transfer, but I would like to have more details. But I also recognize that we are in a crisis. And this COVID-19 is fluid. We're constant, constantly seeing changes, updates, and reports from the CDC, White House, across the board. And I just want to ensure, and I want the public to feel that we are making informed decisions that are in the best interest of our children and our families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's vote. Now this time, we're voting on the budget transfer presented by the administration. Oh, we don't have a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair?
All right. Mr. Young is moving to approve the budget transfer.
Second.
Second.
And this is for the vote, Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. All right. Now, we're moving on to Mr. Barlow's resolution, which he doesn't want me to read again. But is there any other discussion? I think it's been discussed, but Mr. Young?
Well, I'm going to vote, I mean, I'm going to vote in favor of it. I said a moment ago, in context of pandemic, everything, past tense is a nicety, and I'm afraid Rome is burning. I don't want to be accused of fiddling, so I'm going to vote aye.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Let's have our vote. And again, the motion is made by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Burke. Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Okay. Then I believe we are done. No?
I mean, you don't have to have it. I'm just here to offer some information. Wish to have it.
I just wanted, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the board for your support. The administration is deeply appreciative. We take this exceedingly seriously, and my commitment to you is to get you detailed information to make sure you and the public are fully informed at all times. So, again, truly on behalf of our staff and our students, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Ms. Lilly wants to make a clarification.
I just want to make a quick clarification regarding electronic meetings, and certainly this is one where reform is present. At present, and I want to assure the public who's watching, we are in compliance with the bans and all that, even tonight, you can't see the audience, but it's minimal tonight. Oh, sure. I just wanted to reiterate, public can't see the audience, but we're in compliance with the bans that the governor has put in, even have a robust audience here tonight, so we're in compliance with that. But as far as the ability to have electronic meetings from this point forward, because of the restraint in the law, we do have the first prompt, the state of emergency that's been declared as the ability to have it, but the law also says that the purpose of that particular meeting has to be to discuss the emergency. And so, as it stands now, the state of emergency order that was issued by the governor was specific to the coronavirus and any planning efforts related to that. And so, at this point in time, if there's a need to have an emergency, have a meeting by electronic means, meaning that a forum of you as a board is not physically present at one location, the purpose of that particular meeting would have to be in line with that particular-
Even our March 30th meeting?
Even the March 30th meeting. If you're, if you are electing to, or if you want to explore having, and I'm sorry, I just don't want to touch my face. If you're exploring having that meeting by electronic means, yes, the purpose of that meeting as it stands now would have to be to discuss the coronavirus or the parameters that are set out in the order that was issued by the governor. You also want to make, be mindful that if you do that, you still will have to make arrangements for the public to access the meeting, and you have to give notice using the best available method, given the nature of the emergency. There is guidance that has been issued, as many of you know, just, not just on that, but in the FOIA realm, just to reiterate the provisions of the law. There was an AG request, an opinion for an AG, a request for an AG opinion regarding the parameters of that law and recognition of the fact that local governments want to continue to operate and conduct business, but knowing that there is this constraint regarding the ability to only just discuss the nature of the emergency. So, that's a state to item. So, we wanted to make, I just wanted to make it clear that you just can't, at this point in time, change a regular meeting to not try to be, and be able, and think you're going to be able to discuss, pretty whatever you want to discuss at that meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. So, oh, oh, you said we are within the, we're in compliance.
Well, what I'm suggesting now, and the audience can't see us, and, you know, I don't want people to think that we're packed in this room tonight and people are just, you know, the governor had a ban for, I believe, 100 people or more. We're not at that, we're 18 people here or so. So, I just wanted to make it clear to the public that the board is in compliance with the, with the information that has been put out with restrictions now.
And we're in compliance with not having the public comment period?
That is not a legal, a law requirement, that is your policy.
That's our policy.
And I think, given the nature of the reason why we don't want to encourage-
Right, exactly. I'm just saying-
Certainly, you know, we didn't have a public comment period, so they encouraged it down.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. Mr. Young?
And maybe I don't need to ask this question tonight, and I know we've touched on it, but we do have, obviously, a lot of important business going forward, and General just spoke to some of that.
It would largely depend on your ability to meet with five of you as a forum would largely depend on where we go from here. I mean, just earlier today, the, there was guidance given from the federal government to not have gatherings of more than 10 people. And so, you know, should that translate into a more restrictive ban, then that is something that you all will have to take into consideration. Also, at the same time, I do believe that the state would give consideration or is considering perhaps some flexibility with the law to allow public bodies to continue to operate by giving the flexibility, or maybe the order can be expanded to cover the operations of public, you know, public business and those types of things. So, it's a state to item, and so we have, our next meeting is scheduled for the 30th, but that's a, that's to be determined type of conversation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lilly.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
I'm getting ready to adjourn. Did you want to say something before that?
Yes.
Okay. Nice and loud.
I would like to thank my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to call in. And also wanted to add, Superintendent Cameron, when you gave your update, it has been also update parents about open enrollment.
Okay. All right. I don't know if you can hear, but she's thanking you all for letting them call in, thanking you for what you've been doing with open enrollment, okay? All right. This meeting is adjourned.